Good evening, everyone. We have the Queensberry Union Free School District Board of Education Special Meeting, Thursday, February 25th. Appreciate all of you that are just pending online via the Zoom connection. If you could all please join me in the meeting with a flag. So this evening, we're going to begin with open forum. I've read this before, but it bears repeating. Public participation is encouraged. Open forums provide opportunities to address the Board of Education. If you would like to comment during the open forum, please type your full name in the chat bar. And when you're called upon to speak, please state your name, the organization you are representing, if applicable, and the topic you would like to discuss. Open forum is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes, with up to three minutes allocated to each speaker. Board of Education appreciates public attendance and participation at all meetings. There are protocols for the virtual forums. As I said, please type your full name in the chat bar. Participants will be called upon in order of appearance in the chat bar. The Director of Constructional Technology will announce each participant when it's their turn and ask them to unmute themselves. And a timer, I'm not sure if the timer will be visible this time or not, so... What Mr. Luther is going to do is type a one-minute notice to you in the chat bar. So when you commence speaking, when you get to one minute remaining, you'll see that in the chat bar. And then when we get into the three minutes, we will ask you to stop to let somebody else participate. With that, Mr. Luther, you have the first person.
Yes, Mr. Mannix, we have Josh Fawnin. Josh, you can unmute yourself and address the board.
Hi, my name is Josh Fawnin. I'm here on behalf of the football team to talk about the Fall Two Athletics Vote. Good evening. Thank you, Board of Education, for giving us the opportunity to speak today and for wanting to hear our thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Gannon, Mr. Keys, and coaches for creating plans for us to play and play safely. I'm a senior, a lifelong resident of Queensberry, and a lifelong athlete. Not a very good one, but an athlete nonetheless. I grew up playing baseball, soccer, and basketball. I always dreamt of making it as a professional, but as I got cut from several teams, I realized that likely wasn't going to happen. I've been cut from many teams in my life. In middle school, I was cut from the baseball and basketball teams and was on the soccer B-team for two years. At the end of my eighth-grade soccer season, I decided I was going to play football the next year and be the kicker and punter. When freshman football season came around, I was very nervous. The first day, Coach Leon Brunel put me on the offensive line. I'm 90% sure he just gave five of us the eyeball test, but from that day forward, I never looked back. Thanks to the help of volunteer coach Mike Delabella. I never was the punter that year, nor the kicker. I found myself in the trenches, and I loved it. And for the first time, it felt like I found my calling. Football may not have been the first sport I loved, but it was the first sport that loved me back. It taught me many lessons as I pondered quitting many times, but I'm very glad I didn't. It knocked me into good enough shape to make the basketball team that year. Granted, nobody was cut, but hey, a win's a win. That was a great year, and I led the team in verbal blocks. The following year, I played JV for Coach Huth and Coach Martin, where I played offensive line and occasionally defensive line. And I got to be the kicker that year, too. I believe I was four-for-five on the season, which sounds even better considering I didn't get contacts until the third game. Coach Martin believed in me enough to let me kick my first PAT after our first touchdown of the season, and it snuck just over the crossbar. Unfortunately, he didn't believe in me enough to tie the game to send it into overtime, and we lost 27-28, so that one's on you, Coach. I made tremendous strides as an athlete that year. Coach Mike Delabella's time as a volunteer coach helped, but Coach Huth guided me into becoming a better football player and, in doing so, a better man. They disciplined us when we needed it, but we had a great time. They knocked me into shape once again, and I thought I was conditioned enough to try out for basketball, this time at a Coach Fraser tryout. And in doing so, I learned an even greater lesson. Never eat Chinese food before a Coach Fraser basketball tryout, and I got cut. Last year, I became a varsity athlete. The grind was incredible. I was the odd man out on the offensive line, unfortunately, but I took that with a grain of salt. Our linemen were incredibly skilled, and the coaches trusted me to fill in whenever needed. I complied and worked my tail off, knowing I could vie for a starting spot the following year. Unfortunately, the following year has not happened yet, and if it does happen, it will not be the same, but it's better than nothing. I've worked so hard for this year. The sport has given me so much. It has given me the work ethic that inspired me to be an officer for FBLA, president of the Media Production Club, a member of Student Senate, a hard-working student athlete, and to start the Ice Cube Podcast with my co-host Colin O'Truba and Fettuccine McCarthy, which is on Apple Podcasts and Spotify. I truly believe that without football, I would not be the person I am today. I have big plans for my life, and I thank football for that. I owe so much to the game, my coaches, my teammates, for building me into me. But I want to potentially owe an even greater debt of gratitude to you, the Board of Education, for allowing and trusting us to play one last season and do so safely, even if it means I have to wear a hazmat suit to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Next up, we have Katie Johnson. Katie, go ahead and unmute yourself and address the board.
Hi. My name is Katie Johnson, and I'm currently a senior at Queensberry High School. I just want to start off by saying... What? I just want to start off by saying I appreciate you allowing us to voice our thoughts. It means a lot to feel that our voices are heard. I understand this is a very difficult decision to be made during these unprecedented times, and I'm hoping that after hearing all the information over the last few meetings, board members can see that allowing more sports to start would be a benefit for our community and students, not a risk, and that you will move forward with the yes votes. I'm a two-sport, one-sport, three-sport athlete, and I have played varsity lacrosse and varsity volleyball ever since my freshman year. I've been a captain and achieved many accomplishments over the years solely due to the tremendous amount of support behind Queensberry Athletics. Athletics have helped me both to be a better student and a leader. Both my brother and my sister have played sports all their lives, too. I spent my childhood watching my brother's baseball games at the backfields. I learned how to play lacrosse in the backfields, and I have basically spent most of my life on campus due to athletics. Being a part of this inspired me to pursue my dream of division one athletics, just like the Queensberry mission statement says. Although you are all probably getting hundreds of emails mentioning mental health and the impact the lack of sports has had on athletes' mental health, I hope you all take a moment to read through all the stories and listen to students about this. With this going on a year, many students and athletes have been feeling very discouraged about their mental health. Queensberry's core values say that everyone has a gift or a talent, and that community flourishes when all individuals participate in the championship. I've never felt less a part of the Queensberry community and less valued in Queensberry than I have in the past two weeks. And I sincerely hope that the board recognizes the way in which student athletes contribute to the school community. If we are unable to play, it will be another disappointment and false hope for us this year. And even worse, it now feels like athletes in this school are being singled out when everyone else around us has determined it's safe, and I'm having a hard time understanding why we aren't allowed to play. It is hard for me to wrap my head around the fact that New York approved high-risk sports, then Warren County approved higher sports, and then almost every other surrounding school. Then Dr. Borges spoke on our behalf, yet our school isn't allowing us. The rates of COVID in our country and region are now half that they were when we voted on winter high-risk sports. And many schools are having successful basketball and even wrestling seasons, which I hope supports the idea that we can be successful, too. The positivity rate has been under the metric for two weeks now, which... As you may know, volleyball is considered a high-risk sport in New York State, and I want to make sure that the board members know that volleyball is considered moderate or low in other sports or other parts of the countries. Players are spaced out six feet even before COVID, and the idea of the game is to stay far away from your teammates so that you can make the plays. There are lots of ways that we can make volleyball safe, and I commit to being a leader in doing that. I ask you from the bottom of my heart to give me one last volleyball season and to give my peers the last season as well. In my eyes, you have an opportunity to help the great number of students who are also athletes while, as the side shows, not putting others in danger. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Katie.
Next up is Brendan Harris. Brendan, go ahead and unmute yourself and address the board.
How you doing? Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Brendan Harris. I was a Queensberry High School graduate many years ago now. Just want to say a few words, excuse me, in support of letting the kids play. First, from a purely data perspective, we've been able to see from the states that have allowed sports to continue, including football, that there's been really no correlation between sports participation and an increase in positivity rates. There was a Wisconsin study of 30,000 athletes, and through 16,000 practices and 4,000 games, there was really only one positive case that was attributed to sports participation. Obviously, you're going to need to proceed with caution. Excuse me, the data is clearly showing that sports were far from the super-spreader events that they were made out to be. And a case can be made that it's actually been more harmful to the kids to not have sports be an outlet. Study also showed, this has been discussed, that nearly 70% of the athletes experienced depression and anxiety. There's a 50% increase in obesity rates due to the inactivity. There's one thing that would directly keep our kids healthy. It's a physical activity that's just going to strengthen their immune systems. Next point I really wanted to make was how sports and education are really intertwined. I think it's a false choice to have to pick one or the other. Again, there's data that shows that high school athletics' participation is associated with better educational outcomes. The kids are clearly going to learn discipline, grit, how to deal with adversity, teamwork, and above all else, the ability to compete. And really, that's something that we can't take away from them at this point in time in their lives. We want them prepared as they go off to college and out there competing for jobs and opportunity in the marketplace. This is a really important time in their life, and they need to be developing that skill set. And I'll end with this. Queensberry, for me, is a very special place. Surprising how many years ago now that I was there. I don't think it's changed drastically in my time since I've been walking the halls there. I think the kids are smart, resilient, and if you shoot them straight, you give them the safety protocols that they have to follow, I can almost guarantee that they'll be able to do it. I think we've lowered the bar in many ways of expectations for our young people way too far. I think these kids will be able to stay disciplined and safe throughout the season. So in conclusion, I think if we really want to help and protect the kids, the best way to do that is to actually let them play.
Thank you, Brendan.
Next up to speak is James Moore. James, go ahead and unmute yourself and address the board.
Good evening. Thank you, Kyle, Rich, and all the administrators for once again putting together a comprehensive and safe plan to move forward with both football and volleyball. I guess I don't have a whole lot to say. I think the athletes that are speaking are making many of the points that are important to them and important to the community. The only two things that I have to add, I guess my first comment would be really asking Rich and Kyle and the other administrators to reconsider only moving forward with varsity and JV. I think it's very important for them, but I also think that, you know, the developmental aspects of the younger kids that would be participating in modified sports is as important as the varsity and JV. It shouldn't be an either-or, or we shouldn't be choosing which students get to participate and which don't. I understand it requires more effort and work, but I believe that, you know, that age group is as important and almost more important developmentally in regards to participation. The other thing is I would just ask that the board members to really listen to the community. I think that, you know, as representatives from the community that were elected by the community, you know, we need to put aside any personal opinions and really follow what the community is asking and what the community is looking for, and that's really why you gentlemen and ladies were put in place as representatives was to be the voice of the community. So that's really all I have to add to this, and I appreciate the athletes speaking up as well. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Frank Biller is next. Frank, go ahead and unmute yourself and address the board.
Okay. All set? Hey, thanks again for letting me talk tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts on the proposal to begin the sports that are considered high-risk, that being football and volleyball. If you don't know me, I served as an elementary teacher for 31 years in Queensberry. Believe it or not, I retired 14 years ago, but I still continue to coach football and lacrosse in Queensberry. I also had the pleasure of serving on the Board of Education for four years, so I understand how difficult the past few weeks have been for each board member during the proposed return to play for high-risk sports. Each of you deserve a thank you for your commitment to serving on the Board of Education. I don't want to dwell on the past, but rather focus on the future. The Board of Education has the opportunity tonight to take another step toward allowing our students a return to normalcy. Every bit of information that I've seen indicates it's time to allow our athletes to return to their fields and courts. My grandchildren and their friends have sat on the sidelines long enough. It's time for Queensberry to join every other school in Section 2 and allow our athletes the opportunity to play again. Mr. Keys, Mr. Gannon, they've done their homework, and the plan to return to play seems to be a well-thought-out document. I urge each board member to consider how important your vote is to the students tonight and our community. It's my hope that you will all vote yes to allow our students to get back in the fields and the courts. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Brian. Have no... Nobody else signed up to participate in the open forum? Is that right, Mr. Mannix?
That is correct. Did you have anyone sign up?
Close the public forum. And move to the... Incredibly, the first item on our agenda. One more.
Recommend that the board approves Business Item A, motion to accept the resignation of Board of Education Member Joseph Scriber with sincere appreciation and regret effective February 22nd, 2021.
So moved, please. So moved, Jim.
Thank you, second. Stacy. Thank you, Stacy. Discussion on the motion? No, I had a few things. I spoke with Joe, and I wrote down these things in person, but I'll share them here. Joe came on the board just after I did. I got to know Joe real well, and we had a lot of good interactions, a lot of fun. But we also committed a lot of time on the board. I know what it's like, and everyone here knows what it's like. And he certainly was a very educated, or is a very educated person. Very finance savvy, contributed a lot of great discussions to our budget meetings, and everything that we had to do. He always had his own opinion on things, which I think when you get into a board situation, it is to appreciate, wasn't afraid to say it, and certainly no, his voice is going to be missed in this forum.
Thanks, Mr. Mannix. I want to share a little bit. I took time. Joe has... I've known Joe for a long time. He's served on the board. Joe has served on the board for almost nine years, and I did write him a letter that I wanted to share with the community, parts of it. So, Dear Joe, I want to formally thank you again for your nearly nine years of service at the Queensberry Union Free School District. Over these years, Queensberry community has greatly benefited from having you on the board. From your excellent fiscal sense to your wonderful sense of humor, your passion for our school community, it was apparent that you took every meeting. Joe, you would light up a room. You would allow the board to find levity about the situation. I have great memories of getting to know you and hearing about how proud you were of your family. I know you, and your family looked back fondly on the time, you know, your child spent in our school. In return, you gave so much back to our school community. I sincerely want to thank Joe publicly. Being a board member is not easy. It's donating your time and organization. And there were many nights that I remember Joe driving miles and miles from a job he had up north to get here and to sit in a board room with myself and Dr. Huntley till late at night, trying to solve or work through problems or situations to help students here at Queensberry. And I have fond memories of the work and the free time that he gave to benefit all here at Queensberry. So I wanted to publicly thank Joe for that.
Interesting. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? I'm curious. Next report to Educational Arts.
I recommend the board move to approve Educational Item A, the motion to approve the following resolution below, to approve the two high-risk sports of volleyball and football as described in this motion. And Mr. Whitmore?
So, Mr. Mannix, will you call for the...
Need a motion on the resolution, please? Maybe? Second, please? Discussion on the motion? Are seeing the... On line and then we're... Any discussion on the motion?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Dan, I'd like to make one comment on the motion. It's been a tough couple of weeks. A lot of decision-making, a lot of thought process. And just a couple of things that I want to highlight upon in my decisions. One that troubles me most is the... The amount of students that aren't in school learning as they should be. Yes, they are virtual, but I think there's a better education by in-person. And I understand the passion of wanting to play sports. But first and foremost, I believe that we are here to have our children educated. Sports is to enhance education, not the other way around. I'm not a scientist. I'm not an epidemiologist. I'm not an expert in any of those fields. But my decision comes from my heart and how I feel what's going to be safe for the kids. I just hope that going forward, we can be safe, and I do feel bad. I really do feel bad for the students. But I also know that not having going forward with sports, in my mind, that we are keeping them also safe. That's about all I have to say, and I'm ready to proceed. I don't know if anybody else has comments, Dan, or not.
You have the discussion. Mr. Mannix?
Yes, I'd like to just comment. I know what's, you say, bothering you a little bit in terms of the success in academics that these kids were virtual. Might not be added because of that. I think in sports, I have paper after paper after paper after paper that says how well athletes do when they're playing a sport. We also have in our athletic standards, our athletic code, an academic standard, which really kind of makes the student accountable to play sports. It's their incentive to continue to play sports. If their grades aren't good, they don't continue to play sports. It's in our athletic handbook. So I think by playing sports, we're giving these kids an opportunity to better themselves because the papers say athletes perform better than non-athletes. Maybe that's because we have things like this to make them study harder, make them accountable, and also make it a reason for them to continue sports by performing well in the classroom.
Dan, I'd like to make a comment, please.
Athletes, go ahead.
A couple of things. You know, I, too, had reservations, not because of COVID at this point. The positivity rate has clearly decreased. Nobody would have expected when we voted two weeks ago that it was going to drop off as much as it has, so I'm very pleased with that. I hope it continues. I had a concern with students not being in school, and yet we're starting sports as well. I think if we're going to open, let's open. And after talking to Kyle today, I realized that we don't have a choice but to offer Zoom, you know, classes for the students. That hasn't changed yet. So until they get those orders, kids don't have to come to the classroom. But it does bother me. If they want to play sports, I think we need to have everybody in the classroom. The rates that you sent today in the email, Kyle, I mean, they're very low, I felt, of kids in person. The average by age, you know, by the grades in the high school, I mean, it was pretty low. I mean, again, if I wasn't reading it right, we never went back to that conversation, Kyle, but it looked like they were anywhere from, you know, 10% to 29% students in class full-time. We should really encourage our students, and I'm hoping that the parents who are out there that want us to vote on sports would maybe encourage their students to learn in the classroom because I think they are going to be better. And I understand that athletes have to work hard with their grades in order to stay in their sport. But when you can be fouling two classes, and if the teacher signs off and it says you're doing the best you can do, students doing the best that they can do, and they can still play sports, I'm not sure I agree with that. Just a couple of comments, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Brown. Any other discussion on the motion?
Perhaps you heard the statement, "We are weathering the same storm, but in different folks." This analogy would sum up navigating through the COVID-nineteenth pandemic. Whether it be mentally, emotionally, financially, or physically, each person is trying to survive. As individual as each person is, so are the circumstances and working strategies. When I attended Queensberry School, I vividly remember our kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Mellon, directing us to hide under our desks when the airwaves siren went off. And yes, that makes the old. Fast forward many decades, and students have had to endure world issues including terrorism, school shootings, and pandemics. A common goal of pointing to safety and making sure proactively we are prepared for the unknown. This isn't how any of us envisioned education to be: teachers, administrators, students, parents, or the community. Yet here we are, basing decisions none of us ever imagined. The particular decision regarding sports being passed down, forcing individual schools to make the decision for themselves, was certain to be problematic. Someone much wiser than I stated, in difficult situations, who rarely find a path that makes everyone happy. On January eight, I can honestly say, I was undecided on my vote. I listened and respected everyone's perspectives. I appreciated the countless hours that both Superintendent Gannon and Mr. Keys put into the presentation that evening. Their passion and support of students into this district is undeniable. Choices and decisions you make every day affect your life and the lives of others. My final decision was one that I did not take lightly and one that I spent countless hours analyzing. Tonight collectively, we are getting faced with the advent of a different vote decision. I understand sports certainly makes a difference in many students' lives. All three of my children were involved in sports while at Queensberry, and one was a captain. Should I vote yes to the vote, to the sports, the comments that will, the comments will be that I gave in and didn't stand my ground. Should I vote no, the comments will be I didn't listen to the science or the experts. There truly is not a answer that will appease everyone. Once again, I will listen to everyone's voice, administrators, parents, students, the community, and the experts prior to coming to my decision. When reading through the letters presented by the students to the board, one student stated, "We may not have much of a voice in what goes on, but knowing that they are heard is what they think worthwhile for us." I asked to hear from the students at the February eight meeting because their voice does matter. Everyone's voice matters. Those that are passionate, as well as those that feel that they do not have a voice, and also those that choose not to speak, and fear being judged for their beliefs or opinion. I take my own seriously to this floor and hope my best to represent all of us."
Thank you, Stacy. Any other comments? Discussion? We were here three weeks ago for the vote. I think the information, I think I know the information that's come to us since then, both medically and statistically, has done nothing but say to us that it is safe, the programs are designed well, the safety plans are designed well. The infection rates have gone way down. And I don't, I don't, I'm certainly not an expert, but I certainly want to rely on them. And I too and we want students to return to classrooms as soon as possible. We want to return all the students to the extracurricular activities that they've become accustomed to. We've taken every stride we can, I believe, and have still made strides to provide opportunities for every student, whether it be an athlete or a key club member or a drama club member or what have you, with the dozens and dozens of clubs that we try to, the administration tried to put back in place, it was back in place. It's, this is a club for the people that like to play sports. There are numerous, as Dr. Boris put it, roadblocks and speed bumps that will halt programs, slow the programs down if anything should happen to any one of the students. So I just think the information has gotten more complete, more and more about it. I'm confident that we can go forward safely, still protect our students. And certainly when the opportunity comes from the CDC, the state federal guidelines, where we can reduce the distance between kids from six feet to four feet or three feet, then we'll be able to return more kids to the classroom. And we'll do it very, very quickly. All the seniors that we've added, they came back full-time. Monday, we started with a comedy a number of more juniors, seventy more juniors coming back full-time. And we'll be moving the sophomores and freshmen so that we'll have those students that want to come back full-time will have the opportunity to come back full-time. So I just, I don't, I don't know what else we can do with the handcuffs that we've been placed on us by COVID and certain guidelines that come down in the state. But we'll certainly make every effort to do what's best for students. So unless there's more discussion on the motion? Mr. Winmore?
Sure. I'll begin the roll call vote now. Trusty Beldon?
Aye.
Trusty Cabana?
Aye.
Trusty Flaherty? Trusty Holser?
With reservations, aye.
Trusty Mannix?
Aye.
Trusty Malloy? Trusty Shay?
Aye.
Trusty Weaver? With hesitation, aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passed. Thank you all very, very much. Appreciation. Yes. B. I recommend the board I recommend the board move to approve Action Item B. Motion to approve the following coaching appointments for the 2020-21 Fall 2C.
So moved.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay.
The Pat?
Yes.
Thank you. So all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Vote if you're there. Just one other thing that ends the agenda items for the CV, the plans are publicly. They also discuss and included spirit cheerleading, which provides some more opportunities for young people in high school. Of course, it's not competitive cheering, but spirit cheering. I know the athletes certainly appreciate it. Particularly this time of year, it's going to be probably a little cooler than fall weather if they start up the spring, the way it's been running, so. I think that's another great opportunity for young people in high school. Board member comments? Stacy?
When I inquired about becoming a board member, my reason was I wanted to make a difference. Being when I inquired about becoming a board member, my reason was I wanted to make a difference. Being an alone nine, a single mom, I felt it brought perhaps a different perspective, a voice that wasn't being represented. I was informed that was an open seat was available and no one in the community had expressed interest. So therefore, I was running on a post. I was perplexed that in a community such as ours, not one person would step up. For me, it was about getting back to an institution that provided me great opportunities. The pandemic has affected each and every one of us. Each of us has lost something. Perhaps a friend or family member, a job or an activity once above. I have concerns of the ripple effects for years to come for our students. Parents, teachers, and students are doing their best to keep up. While COVID-nineteenth has taken over five hundred thousand lives, the mental and emotional toll will be far greater. And we need to be well-prepared for that. One of our students stated, "Sports truly prepare you for the real world. We will learn how to get along with other personalities and adapt to others in order to resolve conflict, achieve common goals, and communicate effectively." This statement resonated with me. At Queensberry, we strive to prepare our schools for the real world. The past weeks have been a constant reminder that these adults need to get along with other personalities, adapt to others in order to resolve conflict, achieve common goals, and communicate effectively. Our students deserve our best, and so does our community. I would encourage the students that come to board meetings as part of their assignment to engage with the board during open forums, ask questions, provide ideas and feedback. While we will certainly will sign our papers, getting into the tent. It would be great to have you involved. This is an opportunity for your voice to be heard. I would also encourage the community to frequently attend board meetings, not just when there is a controversial issue. And as six years ago I've been a member on the board, the only community member to be consistent and attended did Mr. Koschel. And I didn't see him up there tonight. Show your community support and attendance when we welcome new teachers, grant tenure, or celebrate student achievement. This is also an opportunity for your voice to be heard. And who else I know would like to thank former customers Brad for his dedicated service to the district. His professional experience and expertise in banking will be missed, as well as his president Dan. I have a question.
Thank you, Stacy. Any other board member comments? Go ahead.
The past several weeks have been very tragic and emotional for many. I myself have run the gamut of emotions and have experienced many sleepless nights and struggling to make, as Dr. Bill Borg has said last week, the best decision with imperfect information. However, what has weighed on me the most is the very unsportsmanlike conduct in our community over the issue of sports. Everyone is entitled to their viewpoint, and I respectfully support differences of opinion. However, what I cannot support, whatever, however, what I cannot respect is the harassment, intimidation, and attack from an individual's character due to those differences. Our community is better than that. In a school environment, every moment is a teachable moment. We, as adults, should be by example and teach our children that when things don't go their way, to use their voice and passion to build up, find an alternative. Not, not to strike down or to marginalize. Threats and aggression have no place in our world, let alone in our school district. It is difficult to know what is right. I don't know if our decision is right. I really hope that it is. Time will tell. What I'm really most hopeful for is that we, as a community, can rise above this conflict and move forward together. Let's make this, let's make this our teachable moment. Show our students that differences are acceptable and that respect and decency are what we stand for in Queensberry. Thank you.
Any other board member comments?
I just want to go on the record and say that I support both what Kathy and Stacy said. I've been struggling for the last couple of weeks too with sort of fighting over ways, and right now I will say you both did a phenomenal job tonight. So I thank you for your comments, and I support you.
Hi, Naomi. Any other comments? We meet again on March eighth for a regular scheduled board meeting. And the twenty-second for budget workshop slash special meeting. You definitely agree with that. Anything else coming for the board? And then, I don't know, take the motion to adjourn? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all for participating online. Thank you very much for being here.